Call to order the August 18th meeting of the Cecil Township Planning Commission. We'll start off with the approval of minutes. We've got a little ways to go back here. Let's start with the May 19th minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstain.
Okay, next on the agenda is the June 16th minutes.
I move to approve the June 16th 2022 Planning Commission minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Abstain.
Motion carries. And the July 21st minutes.
I move to approve the Planning Commission minutes dated July 21st, 2022.
I second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Alright, on to old business. Application 2022-0004, Centimarc Garage Edition Site Plan. Anybody here representing Centimarc? No. Is there an option for tabling? Is there application going to be?
Yeah, they're just gonna have to table it again. That's, we haven't heard from them.
It's gonna expire, isn't it?
Yeah, it's next, next month. After the, we'll have next month's meetings.
I'll make a motion to table application 2022-0004, Centimarc Garage Edition Site Plan.
I second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I abstain. Motion carries. Alright, moving on to new business. We have application 2022-0026, Lewis PA Turnpike Commission Plan. Applicant PA Turnpike Commission.
Good evening, Robert Ratcher on behalf of the Turnpike Commission. This is some property, the Turnpike has a 4.8 acre piece of property next to the Southern Beltway, 201 Connie Line Road. The Lewis family has a house that abuts that property. To resolve a dispute between the parties, the Turnpike has agreed to deed over approximately a half acre to their property. So the end result will not be an additional lot. It will be half acre off the Turnpike lot, half acre onto the Lewis lot. Their lot goes from 1.71 to 2.15 acres when it's all said and done. This is in the back of their property and along the one side. No, I think we get the drawing here to show the commission what it looks like. Yeah, so the upper, the upper parcel is the Turnpike. You can see the Lewis's residence right there. There's that triangular section in the back, that's the majority of it. And then there's about a six or eight foot strip that goes up the upper side of it and goes to the front of their property. Actually, what that does is resolves a little bit of an encroachment on the front end of the property. But it does resolve the dispute between them and the Turnpike Commission and really doesn't have any other impact on anybody.
Is anybody from the Lewis property here?
The, per the agreement that the, I've spoken with Mr. Lewis, per the agreement that the Turnpike Commission made with them, they, the ball's being carried at our expense to put it onto their property and so forth. So the answer to that is no, but I have spoken with them.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Questions? Joe, do you have it?
Yeah, per our, per our letter of August 15th, there's a couple of comments from the review. All existing buildings must be dimensionally tied to the property lines. Just a note, no new lot should be created by this plan. Unless a planning module approval is not required. And then the Township Board of Supervisors may have additional comments during the approval process.
Joe, real quick, the application number is wrong on the letter itself. It says 2020-0026?
I will have it corrected.
Okay.
We are aware of the, the engineer's comments and actually I spoke to the engineer this afternoon, we're in the process of tweaking the, the plan so that it reflects those comments.
They don't see any issue with timeline on those before the next Order Supervisors meetings?
I'll make a motion to approve application 2022-0026, Lewis PA Turnpike Commission Plan. Contingent that all items on the letter from Gateway Engineers dated August 15th, 2022 are addressed.
I'll second the motion.
Now, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, application 2022-0027, Cool Valley Illustrated Site Plan Conditional Use, applicant TNR Properties.
Good evening. My name's RJ Sabatino with TNR Properties. I'm here with John Haynes, also with TNR Properties. We're excited and proud to present to you this evening, Cool Valley, the illustrative site plan. Some of the council members may know, or Cecil Township, that some years ago, we came to get this property zoned. This property's been zoned, Interstate Highway Plan Development. Now, we're moving down the process along here, presenting you this evening, the illustrative site plan. So, Cool Valley, the first phase of Cool Valley that we have before you is a true mixed-use development. We have a mix of commercial and residential developments. As part of our process moving forward, we, we submitted in a traffic study that's since been approved, traffic impact study. This is a substantial project. There are substantial off-site improvements that need to take place. While we're not here to talk directly about those off-site improvements, we're here talking about the onsite, the illustrative site plan. Those improvements are still noteworthy, so we provided to the township as part of our submittal the approved PennDOT Traffic Impact Study, as well as detailed, detailed descriptions regarding those off-site improvements. I will also add that we met with the Maple Ridge subdivision, being good neighbors a couple of weeks or so ago. Some of Maple Ridge's initial comments and concerns were traffic, obviously. This is a large development. We went into detail to describe and also sent some information to, I think we have a representative from, from Maple Ridge here, those specific improvements that are going to take place concurrent with the first phase of this development. Additionally, there was a concern regarding buffer. Landscape buffer as it relates to us abutting the Maple Ridge subdivision. To give kind of a background at least, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well, there exists some mature trees on the Maple Ridge subdivision property, common area. We cannot touch those trees. We don't want to touch those trees. We want to maintain that buffer. So there will be substantial buffer maintained from Cool Valley Phase 1 and the Maple Ridge subdivision. Happy to answer any questions from the commission here this evening. Again, we're, we've been long in the process, working diligently to create a plan that works and something that will satisfy the needs and the demands of Cecil Township. And we're excited to have, have this before you and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Realizing it's early, the process, is there an estimate from a housing standpoint, how many units?
Um.
Whether it be, you know, whether it be single-family houses or townhomes, et cetera, just total number of units?
Yeah, so again, this is the first phase for, for the townhomes, I think likely 150-some townhomes, and those will be for sale townhomes. Again, we're here for the illustrative site plan.
Sure.
When we come back specifically for those parcels, those numbers may change. Again, for the townhomes, and now multifamily, we have on parcel D, which is about 13 or so acres, predicting maybe 250 or so apartment units, market rate.
Any plan for Class A office space in this particular portion of the element?
That is most certainly something that is allowed under the IHPD zoning. We have these bubbles laid out as what could be office, what could be neighborhood retail. I'm sure, that I'm sure would be great for our new residents and obviously the existing residents. As you're aware, or as many are aware, that's kind of the COVID situation has made less demand for office. So it really will depend on the market, and once we get users and come back for those more specific plots after we get to the illustrative site plan, that's certainly something that could be an option.
I know the traffic study is predominantly external as far as what you included as far as traffic impacts. What can we do, just, just as the people of Maple Ridge express concerns about traffic, that particular area where you would turn from Morganza to South Point Boulevard is already congested, already kind of a nightmare, already not very fun to drive, especially when you're coming up from the Maple Ridge side of Morganza. How, how can we see or know what's being proposed, provided a schedule for that? Because I'm really hesitant to say yes, I'm okay, because you said the traffic's good without seeing what the traffic modifications are.
Yeah, and as part of our submittal, we did provide a list, bullet point list of the three intersections that we are required to perform improvements on. And again, the traffic impact study and PennDOT ultimately are, will, and we have to require us to complete those improvements concurrent with the first phase development. So some of those intersections are currently failed. When we're assuming an affirmative vote, hear from you this evening, onto the Board of Trustees, and then later, Board of Supervisors, and then later, coming back for those other individual plans concurrent with that development, we will have to do those improvements on those roads concurrent with the development, and then those intersections will no longer be failed.
Yeah, Chris, I, I share your concerns about traffic. I just drove through Bridgeville on my way home before I came down here, you know, and, and seeing what is being done there and is, is very, I mean, for lack of a better way of saying it, reactionary in nature. I mean, the, the traffic improvements always seem to be 10, 20 years behind the development and, and the traffic impacts on the area. So I share your concerns about, you know, what, what changes are we gonna see and how is that going to?
I understand you're saying it'll be concurrent with the development, but I think what Jason is saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that when it's happening concurrent with the development, it often still falls behind.
I'm, I, I hear what you're saying, and I understand, obviously, we experience it as well. Everyone experiences it. These intersections are failed. Technically, from a PennDOT standpoint, they truly are considered failed intersections. So when we put in our, when, if we proceed with our developments, the traffic generated from our developments, in addition to the existing background traffic that you experienced here today, that we all experienced here today, along with our additional developments, after our improvements on those intersections, that traffic will be better, and the intersections will no longer be designated as failed.
So your, your improvements for those intersections, you, you're doing that work concurrent with Phase 1, correct?
For two of the three intersections, the third intersection, I mean, again, yeah, this is all in our submittal. I, I can maybe pull up.
You know, obviously, two intersections are Lewicki and Morganza, South Point Boulevard and Morganza. Where's the third one?
McMurray, Morganza.
McMurray, Morganza.
Okay.
Yeah, so again. So this evening, obviously, we're talking about the illustrative site plan. Completely understand that traffic is a concern. PennDOT and many diligent traffic engineers have spent a lot of time and effort reviewing this. So these are the required improvements that have to take place, and we will perform them. Although it's not directly correlated, I guess, with what we're here this evening, obviously, it's important. But this is the list. I don't know if I'm gonna read it off, but it's part of the, what we submitted, and it goes through line by line, what improvements and what intersections we have to go through according to our approved traffic study from PennDOT, and when we have to go through them, or when we have to undertake those.
And, and so two of these will be done concurrent with Phase 1, the other concurrent with Phase 2?
It's currently being designed. It will have to, it will have to be, once we reach a certain breakpoint, and that is, yeah, correct.
And it's, and the, these designs are anticipated to not only handle current traffic, but anticipated traffic from all phases.
Correct.
So we would get the improvements. Yeah, I did see that. I think I knew that, yeah.
And Joe, Gateway has reviewed the, the impact study.
Yeah.
Working on these.
Yeah, we, we have reviewed the illustrative site, site plan regarding the conditions that are spelled out in the IHPD ordinance. You know, the, number one, the illustrative site plan is for the site. They've provided that. The, number two, the illustrative site plan shall include a written description of the various proposed uses. The plan does comply with that. Because the individual land uses and accesses to the proposed pads are not known specifically, we would recommend that a condition be included that requires a more detailed evaluation of the internal roadway network, circulation, lane configuration, and traffic control be completed. Once the specific uses for the pads are determined, there may be a need for additional lanes on the internal roadway network that may ultimately be required in order for traffic to operate efficiently. The other one is the, three is the illustrative site plan is supposed to accompany evidence that the development can be served by public water and sewer systems. Those letters of service availability have been provided. Covenants, that's number four. There's been a covenants provided for review. We've reviewed them. They are, can be reviewed by others in the township. Number five, a public hearing is to be scheduled for the illustrative site plan, no different than a conditional use hearing. That meeting will have to be scheduled at some point in the future. And then we've looked at the traffic impacts for the development. As stated, there's three intersections that are included in the study. South Point Boulevard at Morganza Road, that one is the one that's being referred to as being handled by the Redevelopment Authority of Washington County, and the developer is responsible for those improvements at Morganza Road and Lewicki Road, and Morganza Road and West McMurray Road. And as you may, you see here on the plan that's been provided, the main access point to this development is through Lewicki Road. There's one point of access, and then there's an emergency access that comes down behind the rear of the Maple Ridge development that is shown on the plan. That's from an external standpoint. There's, like he's, like Mr. Sabatini has said, there's allowances being provided for in the improvements. And I think one thing that needs to be done is that as we go forward with this development, there will have to be a scorecard kept as to the traffic. I mean, as the, the uses come in, how many of those trips are being, you know, knocked off the, the total available? And, you know, then, once, once we hit a certain level of, of traffic that's not available, there's gonna have to be other improvements and modifications. That probably should be a condition of any approval, this illustrative site plan. So, on our, on our letter here, general emergency access way, like I said, is provided from Pad E. That's down there behind the Maple Ridge development.
Joe, is that a, is that a paved emergency access?
I don't think it's very clear as to what, whether it's paved or not. I think that, maybe that's something that would have to be a condition of the approvals. Buffers.
Paving it would, paving it would, could potentially impact stormwater management.
It could. That's true. And we probably, anything that's paved, we'd probably want it to have the capabilities for first responders to properly use it without having any difficulty. I mean, I don't see any grades on this, this, this road. You mean, you wanna probably stay within the township required percentages for grade for the emergency, so that there's no difficulty with first responders, especially fire trucks, having the ability to gain access.
These are all, all the roads within, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. I'm cutting you off. Go ahead and finish, and then I'll.
No, no, I'm gonna ask your question.
Uh, these are all gonna be, public roadways gonna be, correct?
Yes.
So there're gonna have to be some maintenance.
Let me, I apologize. Let me back up. I, I mean, it's likely that, for example, Pad D, I'm just, I'm just gonna be an example, for the multifamily, there will be internal drives that will likely be private. But the main, the main arteries on the site's access will be public, yes.
So the emergency access, we would have to probably be a condition for, you know, is the township gonna be responsible for winter maintenance on that emergency access, or is that gonna be a condition of?
Covenant.
Yeah, of the covenant.
It's probably a good discussion item.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, providing emergency access doesn't do us any good if it can't be used.
That's right.
You know, four months out of the year, whatever it is.
Right.
And that's a gated drive?
The emergency access?
Yes.
I'm not sure how we have a list on there. It's obviously not going to be for public use. Oftentimes, I mean, you have a gate, right, and maybe all the EMS or emergency services have quick access to open the gate. Yeah. We, I, we haven't gotten quite that far yet, but.
Yeah, I think the big thing for us is to make sure that there's gonna be some type of a plan for maintenance on it so that, you know, 10, 15, 20 years after it's been developed.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I will also add that the approved traffic study did not have us being required for any other, any emergency access. We did a pre-application meeting with the township and Gateway and Mr. Desroth requested, oh, if you can do this, we'd like to see that. So that's what we have added here to the rear of the townhomes for that emergency access.
This, this commission has had some substantial conversations, actually just recently, just about residential developments and, and, you know, the need for multiple points of active and, and open.
Of course.
Access and egress. So, and this is a proposal, something that's substant, substantially larger than the housing plans that we've recently been discussing, yet it's provided with a single point of access and egress, so.
We agree that it's, it's a good thing to have that.
So you think it's a, a good thing to have a second?
The emergency, the, the emergency access, yes.
Emergency, okay. We're, we're talking about non-emergency access, egress, full-time, access, secondary point of access and egress.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, again, kind of always approved. Didn't require such a thing, and, I mean, the topo, topography is such that, I mean, it's, it's gonna be very, very, very costly to even put in the emergency access. But we want to do that.
Understood.
I could add one thing. My name is Jim Green with GI. I'm a project manager. As far as the access, I do understand your concerns, but the main road, Lewicki Road's gonna be a four-lane section. There'll be, it's fairly wide, and it does go down to a three-lane section, but, and then two lanes as it heads to the roundabout. But there will be two 11-foot lanes and two four-foot shoulders. So theoretically, you would have three 10-foot lanes. So let's say two lanes were blocked, you'd still have a 10-foot lane for other access there. So that, that could be something, you know, for additional egress, egress in, in the emergency as well. And like RJ had mentioned, you know, as you probably all know, that, that the topography of the site, we looked at other different, other areas on the site as far as trying to get additional access down to Morganza. And, you know, we have two-to-ones, one-and-a-half ones, some one-to-one slopes. It's just, the constructability is just, is just a, a main issue for that, so.
Well, I believe your experiences in that would be able to ask the most articulate questions.
There's always the comment that a wider road provides potential extra access, should there be some limitation to egress and egress. But then we just had a situation a couple of weeks ago where we had a microburst come through, and we had a plan that was completely blocked off for almost 48 hours. Luckily, they did have a second point, totally separate point of egress and egress on the backside of that development. If they couldn't, if, if they didn't have that access, it would have been almost two days where people couldn't leave or get to their homes if they weren't there when the accident occurred. There were power lines down, literally no way to get in from that main entrance everyone uses. Most of the residents didn't even know they had a secondary access point until I told them, because I was helping with traffic control during the storm. And, I mean, it's. And, I mean, it, it's a real problem, and obviously, even if there, it was a wider road, the situation was such that it wouldn't have mattered. The poles were down on the road leading to it, completely blocking access.
But on, on this plan, they, they could access the, the emergency access road. I mean, the residents there should know, at least on that pad E, that there is an emergency access road there, it would, it would be signed. And I'm sure the HOA there would notify them, you know, in case of emergency, you do have this road down to Morganza. So I think that, that could solve some of those problems.
Yeah, that's their, that's their salt storage and everything.
Is there going to be, is there going to be gated access in the PennDOT's paddock there as well?
The, the salt, the salt stack?
It already has a gate.
Well, it has a gate off of seventy-nine.
No, no, it has a gate off of Lewicki.
Off Lewicki, so it's going to be maintained.
Yeah, and we're in the process of negotiating with DGES, the relocation of that.
I appreciate that you want to keep the older trees in the Maple Ridge Development. Are there any areas within each of these plans or phases that you are designating as green space? Or for buffers between the areas?
Yeah, so. We're here this evening for the illustrative site plan, kind of the big, the big picture. We will come back for more specific plans of those parcels when we know what the use is, when we know what we're going to do. And then we will comply with the IHBD as far as open space requirements goes. And if, if landscaping is necessary, then yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Obviously, they keep me from hearing too soon. That looks treacherous just in and of itself. It's like there may be an intent to put a roundabout in front of where the four-way is by PennDOT?
Correct.
I'm going to miss that old white trailer that's been there for forever. See that every weekend. I'm okay.
Are, are these traffic counts on here, is this, is that Lewicki? Is that, is that Lewicki, or is that the traffic on Morganza going past Lewicki?
I, I'm, I don't have what you're looking at.
Joe, it's your letter.
In and out of the development.
Is that, is that looking at trips in and out of the, of the proposed development?
The ADT of fourteen thousand.
ADT.
Okay.
Thank you.
The numbers that I listed in there, those are the daily trips and even PMP coverage that are projected in the approved traffic study. So when Joe mentioned, you know, kind of having a trip bank, the approved traffic study made some pretty broad assumptions on the uses, right? We don't know what the uses are going to be. So instead of tying it to uses, which we'll usually do that for traffic study for something this big, tie it to the trips. So their approved traffic study and the improvements that they're proposing at these off-site intersections will accommodate those trips. As they come in with different pieces throughout the development, and we subtract those trips from it, if the land use mix is significantly different or.
So Gateway's going to monitor those trips as they occur?
Say again?
Gateway's going to be responsible for monitoring that as it increases?
Well, we're recommending that it be a condition that each site plan that comes through be tabulated so that it's very easy to cumulatively keep track of.
Gotcha.
Okay, so we're, so we're looking at close to over fourteen thousand trips a day on Lewicki Road. I don't know.
Right, theoretically, yeah.
Theoretically?
At final build-out.
Based on their assumptions for the build-out of this phase, which is what could have all been approved by then, I think it was called Phase One A or whatever it was. But the land use assumptions are also going to be different. Improvements are based on the year-provided projections. And the improvements are substantial, so we are down to the. There we are. Start coming down from South Point, South Point Boulevard, down towards, oops, there you go. When you start coming down South Point Boulevard, down to Lewicki, you're going to end, you're going to see, it's going to be, what, four lanes the whole way down? So, you know, we're not, it's just, we're not, it's not just putting in turning lanes. We are going to be able to, you know.
With obviously the parking lot being right there, that's the most logical place to move the widening of the road to. Is that going to be an eminent domain? Is that why the Redevelopment Authority is involved?
Yeah, that's still being designed.
Because you have, you have a sheer wall down to a development on the other side.
That's what the design from Redevelopment Authority is going to look at as well as, you know, where to, you know, the turning lanes as well for their, and the extensions of new lanes. As far as Lewicki itself, if you're coming in upper Morganza off the roundabout, and you're down to Morganza, you get to a certain point. When you get to a certain point, the improvements, it will actually be a three-lane exiting approach. Two lanes will go left up the hill. Morganzably, we'll, we'll be widened for another lane up the hill so that it can receive those two. And then the third lane will be for right turns. And those lanes are, I'm going to say, four, five, six hundred feet long. So there's, you know, significant capacity that will be added to locally as a result of the projections.
Save Jack here, if you want to come up and join Joe, you're welcome to. We only have so many microphones we can walk around and hand out, so I'm doing Jack a favor, I think.
Can we go on with the additional comments in our letter?
Yeah, please.
Okay, sure. The other, under the general was, you know, we're asking an explanation of the proposed buffer areas and sections across the development be provided to give a perspective from the neighboring developments should that, so that can be provided for discussion and review. You know, when you look at this illustrative site plan, the Maple Ridge Development sits down below the Cool Valley Development. And, you know, what kind of, I mean, you try to keep, I'm not trying to answer for them, but, you know, you try to keep mature trees in place. But, you know, what is going to be done to supplement there since the Cool Valley site sits higher than the Maple Ridge Development? And I think the other thing that you probably should also look at or ask is, you know, how is lighting going to be affected or controlled? And it may even be something to look at regarding noise depending upon the use that's on these lots. I mean, anything would, that's done would have to be in compliance with the township ordinances. Next comment, applicant has submitted both traffic and stormwater reports for cursory review, and consistency approvals were required for third-party permit applications. We've been working with the developer on getting those items addressed. The next one is applicant has filed for applications for joint permit to the DEP in February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, and an MPDS application on May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. So the developer has been moving in a, in a direction to get the necessary permits to proceed with the development when those permits become available. And then, the last, the applicant has submitted HOP line and grade for Morganza Road and Lewicki Roads intersections to PennDOT. I guess my question is, what's the status of your permits with PennDOT?
They recently resubmitted the line and grade back to PennDOT, I think it was about two weeks ago. There was some topo challenges we had overcome, so that's been resubmitted. We've had several calls with PennDOT, so I think we're in good shape with their comments now.
And I, I know it's in North Trebane, but the Morganza-West McMurray intersection is part of the same plan set as the Lewicki and Morganza, or is that totally separate?
No, that, that's actually been done by trans associates. GI is, is assisting with some of the wall design on the Greek church property, but.
Have those, have those plans been submitted yet?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's back and forth with PennDOT at this point.
But they're different applications, correct?
Yeah, same applicant, but different application.
Those are all the comments from our review letter. I mean, you're welcome to have further discussion.
Is there any knowledge or interest in any of the parcels? Where you would have a cursory bit of information that would allow us to say, hey, that's going to be offices, that's going to be residential? I know it's mixed use, but going back to what Jason said, as far as residential and what you had mentioned as far as the change in requiring office venues after COVID. I would just hate to, to not have that discussion at the forefront and have a surprise of, look, it's all residential and a little bit of retail. So I, I wanted to, to check with you and see what the interest is.
First, I'll hit on the last point. The bubbles on the illustrative site plan are what those designations will be. So, I mean, commercial versus residential. So, I mean, you see that the vast majority of this is going to be commercial. I can tell you one thing for certain is we will be the builder and developer for the multifamily. Other than that, we have received substantial commercial interest. However, we're not at liberty to disclose some of that right now.
Completely understandable, I didn't want to impose.
And the different colors designate different things, like blue is the medical pad, correct? That wasn't, is that a medical pad?
Medical slash commercial, yes.
Okay.
Can I, I ask a question, I, I mean, I mean.
Please do.
That, you know, seeing what I see here from an engineering perspective is, is this going to be something on the line of the Eastern Development in Columbus? Or is this going to be something more like Silver Springs in the Carlisle, Pennsylvania area? If you're familiar with both of those.
Yeah. I wish I had a crystal ball.
Okay.
It's our goal, no matter what, to kind of satisfy the demands of the township. And whatever the market demands, or whatever the, whatever the appetite is, is what will happen, and it's going to be cohesive, mixed-use grade developments for the existing residents, the existing residents of the township, and the new residents of the township that are drawn in as a result of this commercial development. But I do not, I mean, I don't have that kind of future knowledge of what exactly it's going to look like.
I mean, what, the part of reason I'm asking is, you know, I guess the, before COVID, the lifestyle centers seemed to be the attractive, commercial, retail, residential development that developers were, you know, had their eye on. Is that, that kind of a philosophy still existing in the development world? I'm just asking, I'm just.
Yeah, and I, again, I, I'm not sure what, what it's going to be.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, lifestyle centers kind of died a while ago. I mean, it's, South Point Two was initially supposed to be a lifestyle center. It got pared down to just a Main Street district, and we can't keep businesses in there right now.
Right.
So it's.
Can't keep occupancy.
Well, yeah, that's what I mean, yeah. Especially restaurants and retail.
Okay.
It's interesting.
So I, I have a couple of points written down. Second point of open access egress, just for points for further discussion. Apart from lighting, noise, et cetera, impacts on Maple Ridge. And trip counting to limit the, to ensure that the, the average daily traffic doesn't exceed design limits. Covenant. Maintenance, maintenance of emergency access through covenant, via covenant, yeah. Am I missing anything that we've already discussed? Is there more that we need to discuss?
Is there a way to mitigate how much construction is happening at any given time? It, it's a, a matter of, are we going to do a require or a request three phases at a time, three, three of the parcel's plans at a time, the sections? I know part of that is based on demand and need. I'm just thinking of construction, traffic in addition after expressway construction just recently finished in the area. I don't know if I'm articulating what I'm trying to ask.
And, and maybe, how soon does that secondary emergency access get constructed? Is that part of Phase One?
So what you are seeing before you is all Phase One?
Okay.
So everything's going to be earth-moved and infrastructure and then pad-ready?
That's correct, that's correct.
And obviously with the earth-moving, precautions will be made to keep the dust down because obviously the Maple Ridge plant is right there. I know, seeing other development nearby this area, the dust has been tremendous during the dry weather.
I keep looking at your screen because your colors are different to mine.
I just have an old screen. It's not nearly as colorful.
Yeah.
It's the angle.
I can see it better than I can. I keep looking over yours because I think mine's faded out.
Till it, till it back, that's how I do it.
That's what I did, but it didn't.
A little better.
A little better, maybe.
Have you also met with first responders as you've talked about this secondary emergency access?
The secondary emergency access, and we one-hundred percent agree that it's necessary, was sort of more recently added as part of a request from the township at our pre-application meeting. I'm not sure if we've, yeah, not yet, is the answer.
Okay.
And I, the, the emergency access, that's just a very rough, grassy, gravel road, correct?
You know, it, it could be any, any material. I mean, I'd probably recommend because of the slope to be paved. And, you know, because if it's going to be grass or gravel, you're going to have an issue with maintenance. So I, I would say to pave it with asphalt.
It looks like it's kind of trying to meander through the terrain there, so it must be fairly steep, obviously.
Yeah, I think it's around twelve percent, which is less than the township standard, so.
Would there ever be a situation where that proposed emergency access would be used for, say, this residential? say, this residential, the residential area that's right next to it for construction vehicles because, instead of going... Because you're going to have to carve a road all the way to that, right, through Lewicki?
I think, I think that actually them coming in off Lewicki gets the traffic off of Morganza and makes it easier and safer for the public coming in. I mean, tell me if...
Oh, I disagree. 100%. I just was curious if that access emergency was anticipated for anything beyond.
You want to make sure it's not being used for construction.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I agree with that.
Yeah, I think it's going to be, you know, right now, like a 12-foot wide lane. And the steepness of the slope, I wouldn't recommend that, once it's built, it's just going to be used for, you know, EMTs or other ambulances, things of that nature. So, and also, you know, like you had mentioned, you know, in case there's a microburst, you know, if the residents need to get out, they can use that road as well in the emergency.
Tom, sorry, not to put you on the spot, but you're here. So are you comfortable speaking on, a little more on, maybe, Board of Supervisors thoughts on secondary access and egress? I think we've, as a commission, have made our thoughts clear on it numerous times. And I really am not comfortable with the development of this size with a single point of access and egress. I mean, I'm not comfortable with Silver Creek being a single point of access and egress. And I can only imagine what Maronda's response would be if they found out that we approved something of this magnitude. If we force Silver, them to put a second point of access egress and therefore purely residential on something of that size, and then we allow a single point of access in egress for something of this size.
That emergency access is just that. It's going to be gated also. They weren't forced to put a, another roadway into it. So they just have the one road coming off from the turnpike intersection. And then that's just a temporary coming off of our, what's the name of the road down there? Creedmore. It's just an emergency.
It's going to Creedmore now? Because originally it was...
I'm sorry, Silver Creek, where Silver Creek's.
It comes down around that sewage treatment.
Around the sewage, yeah.
But it's still not an access.
Creedmore's coming down where the...
It's not a use access for the residents there. It's...
Okay, we discussed a second point of open access and egress for Silver Creek.
Well, I think they probably have a worse problem than even down on that site because it's the first time I'm seeing this, I mean, just like you are probably. First time we're seeing the illustrative site plan. But I recognize from Maple Ridge all the way up to the Boulevard, it's a cliffside.
Yeah, yeah. And I understand that. I'm just, I'm asking.
Well, again, I think we'd like to look at it. We'd like to have Dan and Joe, they're kind of experts at that, to confirm that there really is no other good place. I mean, they said they looked for, actually, actually, second access. We would ask Dan and Joe, in the meantime, even before we meet with them, to just see if they agree with that, that there's just, you know, just no potential to put a true access in there. Let us at least look at that first, you know, from a standpoint.
No, I get it.
So beyond the access, there were discussions with the people of Maple Ridge? And you've seen the plans and have a level of comfort?
I do. I'm Don Patton. Yeah, we had a good meeting with the developers. We talked about the initial site grading and the need to make sure that things, the dust was not going to be an issue. One question I, and the buffer is, you know, I have a house, a townhouse that abuts the new units, and we want to make sure that, you know, they can't see us, we can't see them, if at all possible. The one question I have from a construction standpoint and grading, what time can work begin? What time does work end? I just don't know.
Yes.
Seven to six? Okay, I just want to make sure our people know. That's what I've been designated as.
That's a good question.
And, you know, the one thing that we try to impress upon these contractors is when the time says 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., that doesn't mean you start idling your machine at 6:30 in the morning to warm it up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
As far as the light is concerned, Jason, you had brought that up, and I believe Joe, you did as well. For anything along Maple Ridge or along any of the other properties around this phase at least, is there a way that we can talk about directional lighting? Make sure that it's no more than one lumen outside of the property line?
That's something that we want to and certainly will consider. I don't have that answer for you right now, but we can most certainly look into that.
Okay.
Type of lighting, lumens.
Yeah, yeah, we do.
So it all depends upon the use.
Yeah.
Parking area, if it's a residential street, whatever.
I'm talking more so about, like, if there's a parking lot.
Yeah, that's.
Right above another property.
Obviously, you'd want to try to keep that away from the, you know, existing development if possible.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we do. I mean, the ordinance covers lighting. Jack or Joe, maybe one of you can speak more... Where'd you go, Jack? He's here somewhere. More eloquently on it, because I can't think of, but does our ordinance cover?
You can't have, there's sites a lot with light, either site.
Right, that's, yeah, there's no light. The ordinance already says no light pollution beyond the property limits. Right. Yeah.
And I think with some of the newer LED lights, that you're able to focus the light more on the property and not get that overspill, like, over the slope towards adjacent properties. But, I mean, that would be something that would have to be looked at on the site plan approval process.
Yeah, that kind of comes at that point.
I'm jumping ahead, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I mean, because we're talking about covenants for the overall, and that's something that, a condition that could be placed upon it, but it's a great question. I think it's already covered by the ordinance.
Is there any possibility that any of the commercial properties would operate 24/7?
There is that possibility.
Again, within township ordinances.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
When construction begins, how do you mark off where your property ends? Like, will there be, would we anticipate fencing? Or how do you mark, how do you protect the construction site?
Yeah, so we will be required to, and we have to stake the property, stake the property lines. And where necessary for erosion control, for stormwater management, we have to place silt fence. So that will protect from stormwater runoff.
Do you have a rough idea, if things move in a timely manner, how soon staking and clearing and such would begin?
Yeah, I mean, truly, it depends on this evening. And it depends on the various other processes that we have to go through. But assuming an affirmative, or, I'm sorry, rather, an affirmative recommendation with what conditions you may add, and then we move on to the Board of Supervisors and assuming a kind of a good affirmative schedule, which we're hopeful for mid 23, spring 23.
So in a perfect world, that's when you would like to break ground?
That's our hopes, yes.
Okay.
Do you intend to use part of the property as an area for construction vehicles to stay, or is there going to be an off-site location for vehicles and storage of materials and things like that?
Yeah, what you see right here is 180 acres approximately. I presume that sometimes there's going to be some equipment there. Yes.
And once you truck it in, it's not leaving until you're done.
Maple Ridge, just so that, you know, not all of this, you're not going to hear all of this. You're going to be affected by those pads probably just right there. So when you look at the construction schedule, that's not going to, not entirely the construction schedule or, you know, getting those pads right, if you will, not going to be the entire time that people have, you know, concerns about construction noise or just the appearance of the lives of construction. Majority of it, you can say the nine pads, majority of that, you won't even notice one.
As far as the earthwork, I'm assuming the site balances pretty well?
So it's going to be cut and filled, then, mostly?
Correct.
Not a lot of tri轴s moving dirt on or off. Aggregate is necessary, things like that, but yeah.
You know, Barbara, to your question about the property line and the buffer, I mean, in some communities where I've worked, I have required the developer to stake out the property line, the limits of disturbance, and where buffers are to remain in place so that there is no encroachments in, over the property lines or into the buffer areas, especially when there's mature trees, to be retained. And, you know, I know that a lot, sometimes there may be that assumption of where the property line is by the current owners. So having it staked out and everybody on the same level playing field is to the benefit to both parties.
Yes.
So state, probably not a bad idea to spell that out in the conditions.
It could never hurt. It could be some, it could be, yeah.
So stake the property line.
Stake the property, the limits of disturbance, and any mature buffers to remain.
I would also say I think it would be nice to have that photographic evidence of those stakes because unfortunately, when there are people involved, as there always are, things might get moved. And I, just to keep, just to keep things.
Honest.
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 Yes.
I would also like to require with that staking of the property lines.
And again, we're, this meeting really isn't for construction quite yet, so.
No, correct.
And we're trying to provide you guys with everything that you're going to be hit with as time goes on. It's sort of a litmus test here, so.
And obviously, we're just a recommending body. So, you know, we're thinking through a number of things ourselves and kind of processing this and working through it. But at the end of the, end day, whatever we, motion we make is just, is something that's going to be taken under advisement by the Board of Supervisors at next month's Board of Supervisor meeting. That's really where the rubber is going to meet the road for, for you. Thank you.
I don't believe I have anything else to add. And I think we're all thinking that. But Jack, is there anything that you would like to add or question as far as the township is concerned?
Maybe this works. I think you've covered everything that I've thought about. I know this is more of a discussion time than anything else. You know, is it appropriate at this point to make a motion and move it on? Or do we need to get more answers? And, I mean, I'm hearing a lot of questions right now that, Joe, I don't know what your thoughts are. I mean, you know, as far as, should we get those answers before it moves on to the Board of Supervisors? I'm going to leave that to, for you to decide, but.
Well, I don't think it would hurt to have the answers before it moves on to the Board of Supervisors because I'm sure there'll be additional questions that'll be raised. I mean, anything we can get checked off the list to help with the decision-making that the Board of Supervisors will be making is to the benefit of the whole project, I think, so.
I'd agree.
I believe, respectfully, that we can get those answers with a recommendation this evening before the Board of Supervisors hearing. So, yeah, yeah. We've got our, we've got our list, and you have your list. And if you write that into the record and issue your recommendation this evening, that would be very much appreciated. And we do respectfully request that, and we will most certainly get those answers well ahead of the Board of Supervisors hearing, if that is how the commission chooses to proceed.
I do want to ask one other question. International fire code, which is part of Cecil Township's ordinance, requires the two ways in, two ways out. That's the way it stands right now. Have you addressed that at all? The international fire code.
I don't have, I don't have that answer. However, I mean, I keep going back to, I keep going back to what was previously approved with, through PennDOT, through a traffic impact study, which shows one access, which is approved. However, we agree that the need for an emergency may arise, which is why we added that emergency access. And this is the plan that, after years of investigation, years of due diligence and hard work, that we're presenting and we wish to move forward with.
We adopted the international fire code several years ago. And that is part of our ordinances. I can provide them to you if you'd like to review them. And I could email them to you, be happy to.
And that would be great.
And I'm not entirely sure, I'm sorry, Mike, thank you, Mike. Mike, maybe you can speak more eloquently on this. But I'm not entirely sure that the traffic study that was performed discussing, you know, the need for necessary external improvements would have been, would have taken into consideration internal site, emergency access and egress necessarily. It's going to talk about potential traffic flow onto state roads, correct?
That's correct. They're mutually exclusive.
Right.
It not, does not dabble at all on site design, what happens within a site. Ordinance of municipalities, they are totally unmarried to the two. They've tried to marry the two in a way with scoping meetings and things like that.
Sure.
From PennDOT's eyes, it was, here's the access that's being proposed, here's our trips, here's our impacts, here's our mitigation. They don't get into what ordinance requirements are, land use requirements are. So they are separate.
And I understand that, you know, you've put years into this. I appreciate that. I understand it and really appreciate it. And I understand that the grading there, it creates a difficult scenario. And looking at the layout, I mean, just, you know, I can, the only place it really looks maybe doable there is potentially the, you know, out through, I think that's Pad, Pad E, right, where the emergency egress is. And doing so would probably negatively impact the... And, um, doing so would probably negatively impact the, the, um, developable, developable area of pad E and probably is not something that's going to be, um, people aren't going to want all the commercial traffic flowing in and out through their residential plan. So I realize there's a lot of moving pieces going on and I, I appreciate that. But on the same time, at the same time, our job is not to look at how, is not necessarily to look at how you want to use the land and, and what's most expedient therefore, for you in that process. It's, it's our job to look at what you want to do with the land and look at what is best for the community that you're trying to place it into.
Completely understand.
To use after you've developed it and moved on to phase two, phase three, or whatever future developments you want to do.
Completely understand and appreciate it. And that is something that we can, uh, most certainly investigate and we can look at before, um, uh, before any further meeting, um, pending a recommendation this evening.
You said you're done and I think we, I think we've all kind of reached that point where we've thought about as much as we can think of without just, I mean, if we sit here long enough, we can continue to think of more things, but how productive will we really be? Um, Barbara, do you have anything else?
No, just in advance, I, I will be abstaining from voting because I am an owner in Maple Ridge. So for this phase, I will be abstaining from voting.
That's fair. I understood, appreciate it.
Well, nope, similar piece.
Uh, I don't see the benefit of tabling this. I think a conditional approval covers all of our concerns.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you on that. I, I think that's the vibe I've gotten from everyone tonight. So, um, so I guess at this point, it, it comes down to the five of us. We've, we've talked about some conditions, so we're talking about conditional approval. Uh, the ones that I've written down, maybe somebody else's others, let's, let's make sure we're all on the same page here. That, we've talked about a second point of open access and egress. Uh, if that emergency egress is maintained, uh, regardless of whether there's a, that's turned into a second point of access egress or whether there's another point of access and egress and that emergency access still remains, I think, uh, there was a condition of maintenance of the emergency access via covenant. Trip counting to limit, uh, the ADT exceeding the design limits. Staking a property line, uh, limits of disturbance buffered, buffers to remain, um, along with photographic evidence thereof. Buffering, lighting, noise, et cetera, impacts on, on Maple Ridge. And then I actually, um, we, I think we touched on it briefly, but I don't remember exactly what we said about it, but there was also, um, I think there needs to be some look at, uh, not just trip counting to limit the, um, ADT exceeding design, um, limits, but also maybe additional traffic studies as individual pads are developed, uh, to ensure that the traffic designs and flows as the, these roads are being designed and, and laid out now, but not even the developer knows what's going to be put on each of those pads beyond, they know there's going to be residential here and there's going to be commercial here. So, uh, there may be needs to, um, revisit some of those, um, traffic flow.
So you're saying traffic studies with each phase?
The, the
Beyond with
The theory behind, yeah, the theory behind that comment is, is you've got a series of internal roads that they have graded in, you know, generically and some right of ways in there. And it seems like there's space for, because I don't know how, why those roads are going to need to be. What, what I'm trying to cover here is as uses become known and pads become known, that internal roadway network, we don't know if they need turn lanes, we don't know if there's going to be a signal needed. We don't want to end up in a situation like South Point did where we're, it's two lanes in east direction with no turn lanes and then we're going in and taking medians out and squeezing in little left turn lanes because there should have been a left turn lane in the beginning. No one looks at the internal traffic. We, guilty as charged as a traffic engineer, I'm always looking at the external stuff. You know, Robinson, Northview, the, the, all these roads that are internal were not designed for the traffic that they accommodate because everyone was concerned about the external stuff. So
Right.
The idea there was, let's make sure they get the internal stuff right so we're not coming back later like we did on South Point Boulevard.
Right, so, uh, so, uh, and, and I read that and I, and, and I, I agreed with that. Uh, so maybe additional condition, uh, for additional traffic studies as, as individual pads are developed?
Internally.
Internally. I just, internal traffic studies within the development.
I'm, we're, we're very thankful and appreciative that the, uh, commission has decided to, it sounds like, uh, vote for a recommendation. I will add on that additional point. Uh, we did see that comment in the staff reports and I'm, I'm kind of young, uh, but Mr. Haynes and Mr. Green have done substantial development work of hundred acre parcels, hundred plus acre parcels, similar to this. And I don't believe that they've ever done an internal traffic study for some of those parcels. However, I mean, the commission can issue that recommendation, but I just wanted to make that known.
Appreciate it, but I'm going to, personally, I agree with this point because I was just in Robinson yesterday and, and I hated my life because of it.
Understood, okay.
No disrespect to site engineers, they're not traffic engineers. Traffic engineers aren't site engineers, but they're
Traffic engineers are animal all of their own. Yes, you are right.
They have to design roads and they don't design roads, if that makes sense.
That makes sense.
No, it's, it's, it's something that
It's happened enough.
It, it should be looked at each, each step along the way and it's to everybody's benefit, including the developers, to look at it, but we've all seen situations where when push comes to shove, things that should, that maybe everyone thinks should happen in a perfect world, don't happen. So by putting it in as a condition, we can ensure that it happens and protect the residents and the future users of that property as it's developed.
Looked at and we understand what it's
Yeah.
Do internally.
I, I agree with it. I'd like to see it as, as additional condition.
I'll agree.
So. Who wants to make the motion?
I would also like to add with construction and prior to construction, that there is a meeting with first responders because regardless of what is determined as far as an answer for a permanent second point of ingress and egress, uh, whether there is a contractor during the construction phase that needs an emergency responder or, uh, a tenant, commercial, residential or otherwise, there does need to be a, a plan in place and an open communication and relationship with first responders in order to make that happen. I know that Cecil has done a fantastic job of that with South Point and with creating a system of notification for various folks within South Point to do so, i- if there are any emergency needs arising.
So, um, periodic meetings with, uh, Township Emergency Services as construction progresses? Construction and development progresses?
Yes. As long as all chiefs are on board with that. I don't want to speak for them.
The offer of period, period
Yes.
Anybody want to entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion if you read the covenants. I motion to approve application two zero two two zero zero two seven, Cool Valley illustrative site plan conditional use for TNR properties at Tulawiki Road and Morganza Road with the parcel IDs as listed on our, our agenda. Conditional to the letter from Gateway Engineers dated August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And barring, uh, questions and covenants are all addressed prior to the Board of Supervisors meeting to include the second point of open access and egress, if possible, to be determined mutually with the Township Engineer. Buffering, lighting, noise, et cetera, impacts on Maple Ridge and other neighbors. Trip counting to limit ADT exceeding design limits. Notice of emergency access via the covenant. To stake the property line, limits of disturbance and buffers to remain, including photographic evidence of such staking once co- construction and development begins. Additional traffic studies as individual pads are developed. And an offer of periodic meetings with Township Emergency Services as construction and development progresses as well.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstain and please make a note that the abstention is purely because I am a owner of Maple Ridge that's, um, in the three hundred foot buffer area or interest area.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, yeah. Mike, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Huge help tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Haberman.
Thank you. Good meeting.
Uh, there is nothing on the agenda for ordinances or amendments, correspondence or announcements?
I didn't want to talk to you about that. On the next item, ordinances and amendments.
Signs?
What?
The signs, the sign one?
No, no, no.
Okay.
We're close, if you can believe it or not, to adopting a comprehensive plan. We're, we're almost there. But, um, that, that issue came up about the mixed use that I think the Steering Commission, Committee came up with. Um, I, I don't think they knew exactly, Jack, catch me, okay? I don't think they exactly knew what they were describing on a mixed use. So I just wanted to ask you to think about this for a while to help us out on it. Mixed use, as you, you saw, this places on a comprehensive plan, proposed map, there's mixed use. We could create a, a, a new category called mixed use, just like we did eighteen years ago when, when we did that, uh, BPD. It was a business park development. It didn't exist. Um, we, we had the, the developments like the Teodori Industrial Park in I one, which was an ugly development. It just had no, no standards. They just, it was just ugly. And then we had the, the high standards of South Point where it included a lot of businesses because they didn't allow anything outside. So, and I guess Walter remembers this too. We came up with that zone that, um, um, it's halfway between the industrial at the Teodori Park and, uh, South Point where the, the, uh, you can have outdoor storage in BPD, but it's, it's highly and heavily screened. So it's a step down from South Point, a step up from industrial, but yet they can do industrial businesses inside there. So, um, um, we created that zone. Now, we could create a whole new category and call it mixed use, but it wait, but if that's the case though, we'd have to come up with a list of all the permitted uses in the, in the new category. Like, you know, like, like commercial has like twenty-three different lists. All, all those zones have a list. Or we could do what South Point, uh, what, what was done in South Point. The, the, the zone was created as, as a district called Special District. So that's the zoning. Uh, if you live on Ironwood, you don't live in a residential zone, you live in SD with a land use category of residential. So, uh, the county put land use categories all through the SD. Commercial, industrial and, uh, residential land use categories. And they spread them out as an illustrative site plan, just like these people are showing. So, uh, we could also, if we created a, a big area that's mixed use, we could also then designate land use categories within the mixed use. So that's our only two choices. Either land use categories or call it mixed use, it's mixed use and here's all the uses you can have in it, which would be residential and a lot of the mild commercials and things like that. But my, my board, we're nowhere on that aspect yet, other than, uh, the comprehensive plan is going to show a lot of mixed use and none of us know what, what, what it's going to be yet.
I, oh, sorry, I was going to say, I believe, uh, John Trant said something along the lines of, "South Point is a unicorn. You're not going to have another one of them." Um, however, from my recollection, from my recollection, um, the comprehensive plan Steering Committee looked at mixed use as something to be similar to South Point. So if it was, it sounds like from what you're saying, special development?
Well, but I'm just saying it has to have a land use category. Say I own five acres of mixed use. I can't just decide I'm going to put a house here and put a, a business right next to it on my own lot. I can, if I subdivided five one acre lots and I'm going to have a house here, a business here, a house here, that, that, that can't work, even though the businesses are supposed to be compatible with residential, not budding, not, you know, or intermixed where it's inappropriate, uh, mixing or indiscriminate mixing. So I'm just saying that, that if I own a hundred acres, you, the, the township may say, okay, this area here along the highway, this can be a land use category of commercial and, and, uh, or it can be a land use category of C two commercial that we have, that we already have existing. But I'm just saying, we have to come up with something. We can't just call it mixed use and, um, other than a, the comprehensive plan can adopt mixed use, uh, you know, undescribed. But when you act, when we actually go to the hearings, which you're going to have also, to actually change any zoning that we want to actually change that, that matches the comprehensive plan, we have to have our ducks in order and, and we're nowhere on that part yet.
This is the problem I've had with the com, with the proposed comprehensive plan from the beginning, Tom. I was at a number of the comprehensive plan, uh, Steering Committee meetings. I, I wasn't at all of them. I was at the meeting whenever they first proposed mixed use. And I asked them to define what they meant by mixed use and their, it was the, the worst case scenario you just kind of proposed is exactly what they had in mind. I said, I said, "This isn't going to work. It's the Wild West. You can't just say it's mixed use and people can just do whatever they want and anywhere with, within the zone." Like, that, you can't have that, it doesn't
I think, I think Christie said she got the, she got the impression that it's, um, land use categories. I, I mean, I, isn't that what you said that you think it's?
I, I remember what you're saying, Jason. Um, I think the intent of it to start and the reason that it went back to that kind of Wild West was the, the initial definition from anybody that proposed something was, well, yeah, like South Point. And that was kibosh to say, "South Point's not going to happen again. You're not going to have South Point."
Three?
Three.
Cool Valley might choose to disagree with you.
Well, wait a minute, but you're, you're aware that there might not be another South Point, but we're not talking about that kind of businesses. Mixed use would be, uh, residential, mixed use of residential and, and, uh, compatible commercials. There won't be any industrial in mixed use unless we see an area, if it's a land use category and there's already a, um, some industrial area that's right there existing, if you want to extend it for tax base, obviously, we still got, have to consider getting the, any industrial commercial we can get for tax base purposes. But, um, um, it's not going to be, nobody's proposing another South Point. I mean, they had a golf course mixed in with it and, uh, um, you're, you're right, there won't be that. But you can still have land use categories of commercial, residential.
But the SD, when we did South Point two, was really, I mean, it worked very well. And we sat there and we looked at all the different categories and said, "Yeah, this makes sense. No, this doesn't make sense," especially for the central business district. There were certain things that we knew just wouldn't make sense down there. And it caused some angst on the, uh, commission at the time, but we said no churches because it just didn't fit. And there was one guy who was very opposed to that because he was very religious. I said, "It's not a slight to the, you know, religious community. It's just that when you're trying to plan out what makes sense in a, in a central business district, the church doesn't make sense." Uh, when you look at, you know, the flow, the parking, everything.
But, but also there is some serious industry in there. I mean, like AccuChecks, they're, 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 they're basically many steel, I mean, they're, they're manufacturers, steel products. So yet, nobody knows it because it's all inside.
Yeah.
We're not going to have anything like that in this mixed use. It's proposed mild commercial and residential.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, I'm not trying to put you on the spot now, but it's something to think about to help to, to, to kind of, uh, you know, weigh in on that.
I, I
How you think we should
Yeah.
Accomplish that.
I was just going to say, Tom, to your point, I, I think there were a lot of, um, kind of loose ends or, or it just wasn't crystal clear what all, all the ramifications of mixed use and what it all meant and
Well, probably then at the time, it didn't matter that much, but now it's getting down to someone use the word cutting time.
Yeah.
to someone used the word cutting time. You know, once we adopt the comprehensive plan, then we, we got to start looking at actually classifying that somehow.
My, my, my personal thoughts on it, Tom, have been that if we just nixed the whole concept of that mixed use, this comprehensive plan would have been approved over a year ago. We, we'd already be moving forward with it. The, it would, the, the mixed use was, it, it ran
A conceptual compromise.
That's a good way to put it.
I got a, I have another, I just can't find the words to say what I want to say.
Wait, I want to tell you this, though. Somebody like Johnny Yago, he owns like 150 acres there. He says, I think his daughter's in medical school or she just finished or something like that. He says, if I want to open, give her a little piece of property, my 150 acres to put in medical, I can't do it. He owns 150 acres he pays taxes on. And I think he was one of the people that came to the meetings. And I think that's, people like that kind of spurred the idea that, hey, well, maybe we should have some kind of mixed use where guy owns 150 acres. He can make a half acre lot for a medical building for, you know, which would be for the community.
Well, he can.
Not, well, not now he can't.
Well, I mean,
He's R1.
Well, if the zoning, the zoning that was proposed with the comprehensive plan is just a proposed, it's not adopting or changing any zoning.
Right.
It sounds like what you're saying is talking about changing zoning itself.
Well, we, I'm saying, we would create a mixed use zone.
That's going to happen, yeah.
Or create a, just land use categories in that mixed use, or divide that mixed use up into our own individuals. Say this is C1, this is C2, C3, R1, R2, R3. The mixed use could be that.
My, my thought is that there was an opportunity, the, the future land use map, everybody knew going in was going to be the issue. And
It was last time.
Yeah. It's, and I, I think
Killed the last one.
Yes, it did. And I think that the mixed use was viewed by many people as a way of saying, of essentially kicking the can down the road and saying,
That's a good way to put it.
Of saying, you know what? We don't need to sit here and, and draw lines and, because if one person's property is owned residential, now you want to flip it to commercial in a future land use map, somebody gets upset. Someone else's property is already zoned commercial, now you try to push it back. It hasn't been developed yet. Now you want to flip it back to residential. Somebody's upset. So I think in a lot of places, especially in that particular area where that was at, during, there have been, in over the last few years that we've been on this commission, there's been a number of people that live in that area who have come in and tried to make applications for
John Dalba.
Well, that's, that's, that's a great example. He's made numerous, but he's not the only one. There's been multiple people in there that have made, have wanted to, have wanted to make use of the property for some other than what it was zoned for. And so I, I think part of the, hey, let's just, let's create a mixed use and let's put it here, was a bit of a way of placating of some people being able to say, hey, we can, now, now we'll be able to do whatever we wanted to do with the property all along.
All right. Well, I'm just saying, we're at that point now.
It's dangerous.
If we did, if everybody did kick the can down the road, it's, now it's time to at least think about it and do something with it. So I'm just asking, I'm not trying to keep you any longer. I just want you to at least start thinking about that and see how you'd like to see that addressed.
So if it stayed as it was, it sounds almost like mixed use is a Band-Aid to allow for spot zoning.
Well, no, we're not going to allow that.
Well, no, I know. I know. But it just, it sounds like it could be a gateway for that. But to say like, hey, house here, business here, house here.
If it's land use categories, it won't be spot zoning.
Exactly.
Just like Fairways Landing, Ironwood.
That's what you're saying.
Yeah.
They designated that as a residential land use category. And Millcraft or Pice bought those two parcels from the county and they had to do residential on those.
You're, you're saying land use categories is a way to still, to give, to give
Subzone, basically.
The mixed use zoning that they wanted, but still have some type of control so that there's not spot zoning.
So it's not indiscriminate mixing.
Right. Yeah. But I, I think part of my point is, that's a lot of work that could be eliminated. We just say, the mixed use was, was something that was an idea to talk about, but it's, in practice, it's, it's better to sit down and, and actually say, here's where we're going to put R1, here's where we're going to put our, nobody wanted to do that.
No, we could do that now. If we leave it on the comprehensive plan map as mixed use, then when we get a rezone, this whole 100 acres is going to stay residential or be residential, no matter what it is. This area, so would be basically rezoning in all those big areas of mixed use into, into a bona fide existing zone we have now, not create a new zone.
No, but I think it's creating, it's, it's creating an extra layer that's unnecessary.
It's not a layer, it's rezoning, just like, I mean,
But rather than taking R1 and, and C2 and saying, we're going to make this area mixed use, and now we're going to put land use
Well, no, no, I'm not saying it's taking any zones that exist. I'm saying that, listen, let's talk about the one big property that was involved in that, Elizabeth Collins, 500 acres. We could say, these 300 acres are going to be stay, stay R1. And it's zoned as R1. And this area along the state, like 980, the state where, where, you know, commercial makes sense, that's going to be some commercial along there. So it's a new commercial zone. And, and so her 500 acres, which was mixed use, is now, you know, mixed use should be gone. Everything would be zoned some category. So mixed use terminology would be gone.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, we can still do that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's my, that's my preference. I mean,
Think about that in the next couple of months because at least we've got to get over that hurdle and then the rest of it will be easy.
Yeah, my, that's my thoughts on it is
Thank you.
Let's, I appreciate that. But my, and that's where my thoughts are on it is, the mixed use, using, creating a new zoning district's unnecessary. I think it's easier to sit down and just say, you know, let's, let's create
That's an option or create a mixed use zone. That's our only two choices.
I think there's, I think there's too much potential for pitfalls and traps in creating a mixed use, mixed use zone, whereas we could just rezone. Is that the right way to?
I'd agree with that.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Barbara?
We'll think about it, too.
Thank you.
Christie?
Thank you for bringing that up.
Agreed.
I think so.
Yeah.
I like the mixed.
You do?
I do.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's okay. You're outnumbered.
You're outnumbered.
Um.
Why not make the plan have mixed use?
You know,
I think I said that
Wait on all over everything.
That's all I was hearing from that.
Well, we haven't adjourned yet.
Yeah.
You're here from, for the Centermark Garage?
No, I'm Jay Lewis. I'm new business number one on the paper. I apologize. I was at work. I was late.
Oh, no, the term
We approved it, yeah.
Thank you, guys. Sorry.
We tabled a different item.
I'm so sorry. The turnpike had left already when you arrived.
You, you wanted it approved, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's approved.
Well, we recommended approval. The board of supervisors will be looking at it.
Well, they have to, yeah.
He said, he said he talked with you, so.
He did, yep.
Okay.
He was in and out of here fast, so.
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Oh, goodness.
But he got to enjoy our company.
God bless you, sir.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I was going to say, you got the comprehensive plan answered, so I'm out.
So moved. So moved.
What about the sign?
Shh. Not tonight.
Yes, sir.
We had a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I said so moved.
Yeah, he said, we have a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I said so moved. That means, yeah.
All in favor?
It was in tandem, whatever you want to put.
We're all a team here.